Okay, good afternoon. A call to order this workshop of the Carabelle City Commission. It's Thursday, August 4th, 2022, at 4:32, 4:33 PM. And the workshop is being conducted in the Carabelle City Hall chambers. And thank you all for silencing your phones. Because this is a workshop, the invocation and pledge of allegiance is not required. So we'll move right on to the discussion at hand, which is discussion concerning the summer camp water and sewer. No action will be taken during this workshop. And if Russell Large is ready, we will just defer to you at this time.
Okay.
Okay. Your microphone, if it's turned on. Okay, and then after we hear from Russell, we'll have some question and answers. And then we'll hear from Charlie and his response on what Russell talks about. Get some input from Charlie and some input from Dan. Certainly, we can have question and answer all through. Just let me know.
Is that any better, Tony?
Yeah. He's important to his as a glare when I look through this glass.
Oh, okay.
Through this glass. So right here, see how I'm looking through that glass?
Maybe we'll take it down in between meetings if we have time.
If Keith or mine was sitting right next to him.
Okay, just go ahead and go to the second page. Okay. So from our last meeting, what we talked about doing was coming up with a summary list of conditions under which the City of Carabelle may consider taking ownership of the St. Joe system for summer camp. And what I did was I segregated this into two categories. The first being the general conditions and the second being the technical conditions. So regarding the general conditions, which we'll get into in a moment, this is my language. I'm sure that Dan would cringe when he reads it, but I'm sure that he can formulate that in the proper way that it needs to be. So those are the two categories, the general conditions and then the technical conditions. And I separated the technical conditions between the water and the sewer system to try to be specific. What I didn't do in the PowerPoint here is list, you know, the obvious items that Carabelle would be responsible for, you know, making any water and the specific details of running the system. I tried to make this purely related to the conditions of operations. Okay? So we'll go ahead and get into number one here. Under the general conditions, any agreement for the City of Carabelle to operate the water and sewer system serving summer camp development is conditioned. Is that all cost associated with such operation be funded by St. Joe? We've talked about that before. The reason there is that not one penny, and that is what we talked about during the meeting, will be expended by Carabelle water and sewer rate payers. So I think that's important to include in what's provided to St. Joe as a specific condition. Right, secondly, all improvements needed to bring the water and sewer system into compliance with regulatory requirements, complete and ready for operation, will be wholly funded and construction by St. Joe and be completed prior to Carabelle assuming operation and maintenance responsibility. The systems need to be in an operational condition prior to Carabelle being assigned their responsibility to operate. That's stating the obvious, but it needs to be stated, and that it would be at near cost. Okay, number three here, that St. Joe is responsible for construction of water and sewer systems provided for any present or future expansion of residential development within summer camp. Such construction will be in conformance with the City of Carabelle specifications. So we know that D.R. Horton is actively constructing new lots. At some point, there will be the necessity to extend the water and sewer mains within the development. So I want to make that clear, that's what they're responsible for. Number four, and this is a very important one, water and sewer revenue sufficient to offset the cost of operation and maintenance is conditioned precedent to an agreement for the City of Carabelle to assume ownership of the water and sewer systems. So those systems must be self-sufficient and pay for themselves before Carabelle will agree to take ownership. In Ms. Precice's list that she provided the city before, she mentioned a maintenance or a management agreement term of two years. And I would suggest that we state that as being two years minimum, but the condition is that the system pays for itself. Okay?
Yes. If I could make a comment?
Russell, that's a big concern of mine right there. You've covered some large concerns, but I've looked over her proposal several times. And that two-year, I don't quite understand because I thought we had already communicated that when the system could pay for itself, not in two years, not in three, not in a year or five years.
Or 10 years, right.
When the system can pay for itself or make money, then I would be willing to take it. So that two years stuck with me. And like I said, I'm going back to her proposal. So I think that's very important.
Right.
It has to be self-sufficient.
Yes.
And two years can be like a time that we come together and do a review, possibly of it, a review to see if it's anywhere coming towards being self-sufficient. Are they, what kind of progress are they making on opening the wastewater treatment plant? Because they've got to get that up and running and getting, get all their infrastructure connected from the lift stations to the wastewater. You know, what kind of progress are they making? We could have a maintenance agreement or you have a maintenance period, maintenance agreement, management period, subcontractors, a manager managing their operations for two years with a two-year review. And Charlie has even suggested possibly an annual review.
Right, well, we'll have to have the audits done for the Public Service Commission. So I think that would be revealing.
But that's just on the financial side, an annual review to see too, how are they moving along with their infrastructure?
Yes.
That's going to be a big, and none of us have a crystal ball to say what that's going to be.
That's true. That's true. In my last discussion with her, she indicated to me that they were trying to get that wastewater plant up. And I think that was really important to them. The pump out and haul method that they're currently using is eating them alive. So, you know, they want to get that plant up.
So let me interject myself in there because this is stuff like, I see.
Okay.
Push. Go on. So one of the things that I kind of see coming along is they're going to get the wastewater plant up and running, and they're going to want to haul the wastewater plant and open it up. I don't see that necessarily as a viable situation, you know, unless they're up to 10,000 or more gallons per day on a daily basis. I don't see that working. It's going to cause a bigger problem as time goes by. If you have 10,000 gallons a day on a two-day period or a three-day period on a big weekend, but then Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, we fall off to next to nothing, because I watch them haul through our plant now, then what's out there is not going to have any food, it's not going to be able to operate that way. It would still have to come here until some point where we reached a level that it would be, the plant would be able to get that 10,000, and it would probably be 20,000 on those big weekends or 30,000 on the big weekends instead of just 10. And the numbers would jump up dramatically to operate the plant. So I already kind of had that feeling from their paperwork, what she was talking about, is they're in a rush to get the wastewater plant online so they don't have to haul at any rate. But the wastewater plant won't operate at the rate that they have right now.
Yeah, I agree with you. And keep in mind, I'm on the general conditions right now.
Sure.
I've got my specific technical ones, but that's okay. Point, point is noted, that the wastewater plant may not be coming on in two years.
Right.
Yeah. All right, number five here, this is also an important one. If at any time during the maintenance period, the city desires for any reason to discontinue providing operation services, then do so providing 60 days written notice. That's just a clear out for the City of Carabelle for any reason. And I think 60 days notice is, that's fair to St. Joe.
Sure. I'm sure by the time we come to that decision, we'll have, you know, have a lot of time invested in the decision before we get there, 60 days.
Right. And I left some blank spots here. If through the discussion here, we developed some additional conditions, we can add that to the list. And I went out to number 11, if in case we have some additional conditions to add. Okay, we'll move on to some of the technical conditions of operation. This is on the water system first. First is that Carabelle will have access to and use of all property, existing materials and equipment owned by St. Joe. We obviously need to have unrestricted access and use to perform operation. Second, all existing and future water meters shall be replaced with radio red water meters in conformance with the City of Carabelle specification. And that allows for the automated meter reading consistent with the city's existing means and methods of operation. Do you agree with that?
Charlie, go ahead.
Okay. All right, third, the SCADA systems, which monitor pump, treatment, water levels, and other operation measures, shall be installed in conformance with the City of Carabelle's specifications. That allows for the automated reporting and operation of the systems remotely, also consistent with the city's existing means and methods. So Charlie's able to monitor that system from his desk, and I assume he can make changes from the desk as well.
Yeah, but, you know, we just get monitored right now.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but that's like right off the front. I mean, that's a, you know, we can't wait two years to have that set up.
Right.
Just can't operate it for two years that way.
So you're saying you need, you would want need the SCADA to take over?
That would be one of the first things. The water meters and the SCADA would have to come in when we sign an agreement, we need to be working towards that direction.
Before we start.
You say the board?
Somewhere in that range. Well, I mean, like, like they had said, going back to the first of the year, making the decision, that's when the SCADA, the water meters, whenever we start doing the maintenance out there, that needs to be changed. There's only like, we're talking about 35 water meters, it's not.
Yeah, that can be done short order. But what about the SCADA, you know, that's?
Well, that's going to take some time, but, you know, we'll work bits and pieces of it in to get there.
Do they have no SCADA out there?
I don't know what they have, though. That's something we'll have to look at, yeah.
Might have to give them like a minimum amount of time to get the SCADA, you know?
Sure. You know, just buying parts and stuff, it's going to take time.
Okay. All right, number four here, for an initial period of time to be determined but not less than 60 days, operation will be in conjunction with the current personnel operating system. Shane Dudley, just want to make sure he's available during that initial period. And that allows for the system, for the personnel to be oriented with the system and, you know, by Shane who's currently operating it. Right, number five, this one, I'm a little, I think it's something we should talk about. Number five, interconnection to the City of Carabelle water system along US 98 connecting to the existing summer camp well field. We've talked about this interconnection before, that will allow for the reliability between the two systems, consistent with the water management district's stated objectives. So we talked about running water back to the City of Carabelle or running waterfront Carabelle to their system. So this interconnection will allow Carabelle to send water to their system. We wouldn't, at least for the initial period, we could send finished water to their system. That way, we're not having to operate their treatment system, so we can supply finished water to their system. I think St. Joe would come back and say, that sounds like a great idea, but the minute you switch the valve and send water back to Carabelle, I could see them maybe taking issue with that because that's, that's their water that we would be feeding back into the system.
Well, this is not an easy set is done. The water goes into their raw water line and goes to their water plant. It passes by their wells. So to turn their wells on to pump water, it wouldn't be able to go to their treatment system. It would go directly back to Carabelle, and it would be untreated and chlorinated. So that's not, that would take a lot of doing to do that legally.
Yeah, I can see that, especially if there are customers in between.
Yeah, and there is. And there's the condos starting, they're customers right down the road. So I don't foresee it going backwards, not at this point. Maybe some juncture, you know, in time when their water system gets looped, it comes back down 98 towards the condos. It's possible that it could be a junction piece with a couple valves put in. But right now, the way it's set up, it wouldn't be, I don't, maybe in an emergency situation where we had a hurricane and you didn't have, you were just pushing water so somebody could take a shower or fill up a toilet, and everybody was on boil water notice, now that might be a different story, you know, in a very big emergency situation. But other than that, I don't see where they can do it legally.
I understood that the, that the interconnection would be, I thought, from Lanark water treatment plant. The water would come from Lanark over there and bypass their wells and go straight to holding tanks.
That's right.
Okay, and then from the holding tanks out to the customer.
That's right.
And bypass their treatment center. That way, we would not have to provide a licensed operator. That finished water would be covered by the DEP guidelines through our licensed operator that we have that is onboard right now. We wouldn't have to have extra hours each day for a licensed operator to operate that wastewater treatment plant. And I didn't really know, I don't remember that we discussed, well, like Charlie, in the future, we would have, where water could come back, and it might even be finished water coming back, is what the water management system of district wants eventually, but that would be, like you say, a long time in the future for that.
It wouldn't just happen.
But that is, the way I understand it from Charlie, that interconnection is something that we really need. We don't have licensed operators in this area enough to provide the hours that are required by the DEP to operate that plant.
Right. There's some logistics along with that effort, too. It's going to take some time to get that built. So in the meantime, they're going to have to continue to run their plant. And if Carabelle is responsible for operation during that period, they will have to provide a licensed operator.
Unless Mr. Scott Dudley or Shane Dudley is planning on staying onboard, you know?
Well, he's not licensed.
Oh?
So I had talked to my guys about, well, when we, one of our meetings previous, we had, they had talked about, Shane or somebody had talked about how many hours a day, we're considering something like two hours a day, that one day a week, working a five-hour day out there to provide the water, make the water that one day a week for the week. I had put some numbers to that where our staff would work overtime for that, and they would pay that directly. I guess they would pay it to the city, and the city would pay it out as some sort of a form of check. I don't know how that would exactly work, but somewhere else is legal.
Right, right. Get reimbursed in some way.
But if we had a, for budgeting purposes, so that we know where we're at, we said, look, this takes this many hours, I've got this guy working seven hours, and, you know, three of us split it up, seven hours a piece or seven and a half hours a piece, whatever we're going to do, and then put their wages in there, combine it together, make a total for a budget purpose, and this is the check that you'll write every week.
But that would be a temporary, that would be temporary until they can get the?
Interconnection. And the interconnection is the whole key. If we don't do the interconnection, that, I, I'm, it's going to cost money to operate that system. And this would cost money for a lot of years to operate that system. You know, you only need one failure out there to add another $20,000 to it. You know, it's, that's half a year's wage for another operator.
Right, so, I mean, ultimately, or initially, it, I think it would be to their advantage to put that interconnected in.
Yeah. So the whole thing of holding on for two years, and I had mentioned this to Mayor Courtney the other day, you know, I understand why we're doing it, and I understand that we don't want to go in the hole out there doing it. But with all that said, we don't have the ability to get money from the state of Florida to do that because it's not our system. They don't have the ability to get money from the state of Florida like we do. So, you know, or at least like maybe an 80-20 split on a SRF loan or something like that, they probably don't have that ability. So they would have to pay for the whole thing. And that is, you know, a wrench thrown into the whole thing. If we can't, if we can't get that interconnect done, it kind of throws the whole deal out in my mind, where I'm standing as an operator.
And if they, if we, if they give the City of Carabelle all of the facilities, they want no more to do with it, so?
I understand. It's a hard one, you know? I had also mentioned too, in my meeting with the Mayor Courtney, that I'm sitting on top of the fence. I really don't realize, you know, we just, everybody's here has put in a lot of time already on this. I've probably, Courtney and I have probably got, you know, 10 years involved in this. Where's the point where you draw a line? I just feel like, you know, I've driven through out there, I don't see where there's any construction going on. They've never built their sewer system. Their sewer system's still not built. They're not building it today. So what are we waiting on? It's not my responsibility, it's not the city's responsibility to build their sewer system. It's theirs. And then the water's a whole other, you know, a whole nother issue. But they're not doing anything with the sewer system today.
And I agree with that outlook, that observation that you have. They're not, they're steady building houses or selling to a developer who's steady throwing up houses. But where's their infrastructure? Where is even a backhoe out there, some pipe stacked up or something to indicate?
Maybe they've ordered it, and I don't know, you know, and I didn't see it, I give them the benefit of the doubt, but we've been at this for years, and we've always known from day one that none of their lift stations are connected together with piping. There's a lift station in a hole, and it can't pump anywhere. And there's another one over there, and it can't pump anywhere. You've got a sewer plant way over there, and it's not tied to anything else. And if you don't ever do anything with it, it stays like that. Now, I don't know who they're waiting for to do that. I just feel like I'm sitting on the fence, and I don't know which way to go here.
And meanwhile, we spend a lot of time and thought and?
We are, we have time.
Brain thought, thinking this, trying to figure this out, all of us, we're paying salaries here, we're paying you and Mr. Hartman to be here, and Charlie's salary, you know, and where are we getting with it? We would like to have it eventually as, and to be a regional provider, but certainly if St. Joe wasn't involved and those houses were going on out there, we would have approached it in a different way, I believe. But they would be unwell and septic until we, there were enough houses to justify SRF loans from wherever they come from, DEP water management district grants and that type of thing, just like we're doing out at Lighthouse State.
I have a question, and you guys may have thought about this, but I hadn't thought about the aspect that we would be able to get grants, and they obviously can't or may not have as many resources as we do. So is it an option if we take it over ownership and then apply for a grant to do the connection? Would that be a possibility, or is that just not something that would be smart for us to take on? Because it is a risk.
So I look over at Dan because that's going to give him heartburn, because once we take the system on, they can walk away. And what legal action do we have? We would have to take legal action. And do we want to get in? I'm not, I shouldn't be speaking every day. But do we want to get into legal action?
It would be years of legal action. If they give us the system, I think, the way I'm understanding it, so that we would qualify to get state and federal grant money, they would have to give us a system. And the way they have to express it, once they give us the system, they're gone. They're gone. And it's not ready, it's not ready to operate.
I don't mean like right now, they give it to us, but once more houses are built and it's maybe two years or however?
I don't know how you do that without dissolving their utility and turning it over into our utility. I'm not, I'm just saying. So we can do that, I'm not sure that water management or DEP will allow us to get there. There may be a way, but it would be a hard one to get.
And funding takes years.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know how long we've worked on this Lighthouse estate, maybe four years, maybe longer. And I know we were working on this when you were onboard last.
So they definitely need to have the interconnection before we take ownership, is that what you're saying?
To make the system work, it needs to be there. I don't know where the, where that falls into place, but as long as everybody understands, without that, it's going to cost money to operate the system. Once that pipe goes in line, it's just added on to our system. It doesn't really cost anything, I shouldn't say any. There's a little bit of electric cost because you have to repump it, and there's a few more samples, but it's minimal compared to having an operator, a full staff out there, chlorine, chemicals, everything, running the filter, running the wells, all that gets shut down.
And so by operating their system, having to operate their system without that interconnection, the City of Carabelle can't afford to do that because there's just like 32 houses out there, and that will not fund?
Even in the hundred houses, it's still not that much. So they're only making water one day a week. I mean, we make water, we make millions of gallons every day, or 100,000 gallons of water every day. So, I mean, we're, you know, it's, their water is stale, the water doesn't get moved, there's a whole bunch of things to go with that.
You don't have to wait nine months for the interconnection to break. Don't stop.
They can wait for it. I had thought?
You don't have to worry upon it, you can do an interconnect. St. Joe can pay for that.
Sure.
You yourself, St. Joe, you're responsible for-
I just, I know, we had said before, it's very expensive, so I wasn't sure if they've budgeted for that.
But I think that was what we originally planned, and that was the plan that they got, was they did the interconnect.
I mean, we're kind of, we're just trying to solve all of their problems, right? And we're making them our own, and that's gonna be expensive for us, no matter how we cut it. Even if we do the interconnect, we'd have to have a bulk water rate, because we're sending them our finished water, to be metered, they would be paying. We're almost back where we started, which is, we're doing Summer Camp a big favor, just by being here and saying, hey, you don't have to run your water plant. We'll send you water, and you'll pay a bulk rate that'll be reasonable. Our rates aren't high, and it's a bulk rate, so we're not even charging them, you know, that. And then on the sewer side, once they have enough people out there, you know, what Charlie was just saying, I think, is, on the sewer side, they don't even have enough customers yet to run it. So, that's the threshold, right? When they have finally enough customers to run the water, oh, sorry, sewer plant, that would be when we'd get into a management agreement, where we might run their sewer plant, which could be, you know, 10 years from now, or who knows when, but should be soon. But then we would run it, I would think we would have, we could, it would make sense, there'd be some way to do that, where they bear the cost. And then, ultimately, we could own the sewer plant out there, and, but we wouldn't want it until it was viable, or profitable. I don't say profitable, but where we're break even. And, God, that's a long time from now on the sewer side, if ever, right? I mean, it's just, and, but all those things are helping them out, because our point, where we hit, and we can run it in a break-even fashion, is before they could ever do it, because they're a for-profit, they're paying, they're paying higher for labor, for paying tax on everything. So, our costs will be lower, and they will want out from under it, when it would make sense for us to actually take it over. That's, that's in the future. I mean, I, I do think, I mean, the interconnect, water interconnect alone, they should, they can crunch the numbers. Russell, I'm sure, we haven't finished his report, but he can tell us, and he can certainly talk to them. Does it make sense? I mean, as far as, if they invest in the interconnect, have a bulk rate that we can calculate, that's getting them out of the water business, and that's a big plus for them, I would think. And the sewer business is a more, is a bigger problem for them, but they're dealing with it. They're pumping those, those stations out, and, or they, they're bringing it to us now.
Some of it.
Some of it, yeah. But we can arrange where they could bring it to us, and take it.
Sure. I had actually thought about setting up a connection in St. James Bay, so they didn't have to haul it so far-
Yep.
-for this temporary situation, and that would cut down some of their costs as well.
And we just do a bulk rate for both on those, and we've certainly helped them out. It adds a big help to them, I would think. But these other things are a bit complicated, and there's so many ways we get burned on.
I, I have a question, then. How are they operating their water treatment plant without a licensed operator?
So, they had, just changed that, they have a new, a guy that just got his, well, wastewater license, or water license, I'm sorry, and they have just hired someone. So, they do have an operator, isn't it?
What did they do before contracting out?
They were, no, well, previous, many years back, they had, but for the last few years, they went to DEP and lowered their permit value, so that they were underneath the rules. They didn't have, they weren't making any water, you know, 2,000 or 3,000 gallons a day, and they, they got it to where they didn't need an operator. But they needed, they wanted to, as I understand, they wanted, with the, the homes that are being built and stuff, the DEPs, you know, it's required to have an operator there, run a full staff, you know, and all that stuff, so, or staff.
So, it was, so they're bulk finished water, they, they don't need a licensed operator anymore, so they could operate?
Well, then, so you're selling bulk water, they're not, they're a conjoined system, but they're, I don't know if they would need somebody to pull samples and do things out there.
Okay.
They're, they're still gonna be liable for something.
And since they hired this licensed operator, are they still contracting, do you know, contracting with Jones to set the meters, or?
As far as I know, they're- So, what if they put a bunch of money in escrow, we had some pot to work off of? I would, Dan, feel about that.
Money in escrow for, I know-
Everything.
Like, if we went ahead and took it?
So, yeah, so we could pay like 20, if there was 80, 20 grand, we would have enough to pay the 20. If there was operations, maintenance, a well pump went down, ice service pump broke, computer got hit by lightning, any one of them, or anything, that came up, granted, we're have to have auditing on all sides.
In this scenario, it's us taking over the system, period, taking ownership of that. They put money in escrow to safeguard us financially from the downside.
Because if they dissolve their system, and it comes into the city's name, the city then has the ability to, it's, so we're not, we're only looking at Summer Camp today, and there's still other parts beyond Summer Camp that we wanna bring in. We can't even start that, which is what would make the sewer plant work on our end, because we can't move any further until we bring it into our name.
And Russell, I'm sure, has looked at them. The thing that I went to over and over was the PSC annual reports for the St. James Island Utility Company, and it looked like between $200,000 and $400,000 loss a year. So, if they put, I mean, just kind of wrap my mind around that, is, let's pretend it was, that we wouldn't lose the same amount, because our expenses wouldn't be as high. But even if it was $250,000 on average loss a year operating that system, they would have to put millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars up, right? I mean, because we, we will lose that every year under the current circumstances, and-
So, I was at 500,000 or more, just gave me where, and that's just off the top of my head.
Right, you think they're losing 500 grand or what?
No, I said, they would have to put 500,000 in the bank.
Or more each year?
Or more.
I mean, not each year.
They'd have to start out with like 500,000 to make the deal work.
But that, that would cover about two years.
That would cover about two years. That, that's the thing, the burn rate out there is so extreme.
So, you, you, yeah, I'm, I'm with you.
And they're selling lots, they're doing deals that make them money, so it makes sense for them to spend that money. But the city, yeah, just coming back on us, or, you know, all the rest of our system, is the, I mean, you know that.
Yeah, but it can't move until, I, the city can't do anything. And, and this is where I'm sitting on top of the fence, dude, what do we do here?
I don't wanna bet.
Do we keep going back and forth, and we say, hey, this is time to let it go? And I'm trying to get to that, or more or less.
Well, I think we'd be, to be in the water business, to sell them bulk water, if, but they may say, you're right, they may say, now, we don't wanna, we don't wanna shut down that side of our utility system, or however they would do it, right? But we don't wanna, they may not be up for it. But that makes sense for the city. We get paid. I mean, we'll get, we'll just pump a little more water in Landmark, or maybe, well, it'll be, that would be make us money, right? That is a profitable enterprise for the city to sell bulk water out there, if they put in the infrastructure. We'd actually, that would be a benefit to our system.
Through 70 homes, I'm, sure.
We're just adding 70, yeah, 70, and a little bit of a discount.
I don't think that's gonna cut it for them. I, I think they wanna get out of you. That leaves them in the utility business.
I understand they wanna get out of the utility business, because they're losing 300 grand a year.
Right. But it also-
We don't wanna do that.
So, again, we would be able to move forward. We, we, we're stalled, we're stalled for, until, until the utility comes to the city's name.
And, and, and it won't come to the city's name until it's self-supporting.
Right, which could be 10 years. So, then, all that other stuff out there, just forget about it, because I ain't gonna be here 10 years. And I don't mean that in any rude way, but we're getting to my time, where I'm not gonna be here, somebody else will have to carry the torch on. And, and it's hard, because, unless we know what we're doing, it's hard.
No, and I agree. Like, I, what's interesting about this one, normally, people throw problems at my lab, and I say, okay, there's a solution, what's an engineering solution, a legal solution, and that's what we're kind of spending all our time on, which is good. But where I get to sit back here and just throw darts at, at things, which is not normally what I get to do, but I'm, I get to do it here, is financial. I mean, it's not a technical solution. We can skin that cat five different ways, right, on water, sewer, service, bulk, individual, whatever, have operators moving around and, but financially, what's it do? I mean, until it's financially numerative to the city, why would we do it? And why risk, why take risks?
Then I would have to say I fell off the fence and said, we don't wanna do it.
Yeah, no, I mean-
Isn't that what Russell has already pointed out, and not before, his thing, that
if we can't, if we can't operate Summer Camp at a loss, I mean, without, without a loss, we're not there.
That's right.
Right.
And-
That's the bottom line.
That's right. And for the period that we would consider operating in, St. Joe's funding all that.
If, if St. Joe funds-
There's no amount of pocket money from the city.
If St. Joe's gonna fund everything, Charlie's brought up some points that, that's not my profession, that, that's very interesting, because he knows where it's sold. He's brought up some points where money needs to be spent, okay? If they're not gonna fund those things, we're not into it. If they're not gonna fund the operation and maintenance for Charlie to keep it running, we're not into it. I mean, that's, that's what you said in number four. If it's gonna cost us one penny, we're, we're not there.
And, and, and we have to remember, too, that it's not just the operation and maintenance, that it's the staff, we have administrative-
All, all, all associated with this, with this proposal.
That's right. All means all.
Yeah.
And we would have to assign in the budget, even legal, in our water and sewer, we have consultant budgeted, budgeted in there, consultant hour, legal hours, we've got everything, uniforms, gasoline, truck, you know.
And, and, and that's the kind of thing that, that I'm thinking, that we need to communicate back to St. Joe. And if they're interested in paying the entire cost, and for us to operate it, just like if they're hiring a private contractor, with us, with the city having no loss at all, we're more interested in it. But if we can't, we can't. And I'm over there, everybody else, and I've said this before, and I'm repeating myself, very interested in taking on that, that Summer Camp, but not at a loss.
Right.
And, and there's some complications going on there that Charlie's brought up about the city, and grant money, possible grant money, and all those kind of things. And that was another question I was gonna ask, and her proposal, I read in there after two years, and I'm not bringing the two-year thing back up, called the bar rate expressed my opinion there. But there was something that I remember reading in there, that at the end of that two-year period, they had turned it over to the city of Caravelle, but they would maintain ownership of the equipment and the property. If in the future, whatever that time may be, that the city of Caravelle is, if it happens and was showing a profit, and they were to take over the system completely, and it's showing a profit, let's just hypothetically say there was 300 homes was built in five years, and, and the city was making a profit, and we took it, I would expect them to turn that equipment and property over to the city of Caravelle. Same situation like happened with Landmark, Billings.
Right.
I'll, that's just me.
It's okay, it's good.
I mean, it's, Dan makes a good point. I mean, the city is, the city would be stepping up. I mean, they're going, they would be going out of their way-
Yeah.
-to operate that system, staff it, manage it internally, externally, at cost, at cost. Now, if, if we had a bulk water rate that we could establish with them, okay, maybe the city could make profit in that way. And the same on the sewer side, because if they pump and haul to Caravelle's plant, you charge them for that, too, so you're charging them water and sewer. So, I suppose there is the possibility for increased revenue from, from that side during the operation period, but Caravelle is going out of their way to, to help them.
And I did ask at our last meet, when we had met in July on this, what is the incentive, you know, for staff to, to do this, and for the city, and for us, this board? And one of you replied, the eventual ownership of the infrastructure there.
Yeah, yeah. Now, if, you have to ask, what is it worth? Well, if, if it costs you something, it doesn't have any worth. But if, if you profit from it, if it's self-sustaining, if it pays for itself, adds to the water and sewer fund, then it's got some worth. And then there's the intrinsic value for, you know, at some point in the future, expanding to the east.
For this part, that I, that I could try to harp on, you can't expand to the east in 10 years. You don't own it.
Right.
It's not your sewer plant, it's not your utility.
Exactly.
And it could be 10 years, so you can't move to the east at all.
But if you can pick up St. Teresa, that would give you the money you needed to-
Well, right, but that's what I'm trying, and again, that's what I'm trying to say, without moving on, and you're picking up more customers that are on beyond Summer Camp, you're not operating the sewer plant, that could be 10, 12, 15, not within 15 years. It's just starting to take off here in Caravelle. If we wait another 15 years, you know, who wants, I don't want, we don't wanna operate, I don't think the city wants to operate it as, as we're doing this two-year thing, and we extended it, and extended it, and extended it. It needs to come to the city, or we need to figure out some way out of it, just give it up. I don't, I don't like the bulk rate, not that I, I understand what it is, I would rather not do the deal. If they want water, they can put it in, put a meter up. I don't want to, you know what I mean?
You do their own, if they're a water plant, don't think.
They, they can add on the line and put a meter in, and get water from us. But I don't think that's what, that's not what they're looking for. They're looking to get out of the utility business, and turn the system over to us at some point.
That's what I, that's the way I was looking at it.
Yeah, and, and I mean, there's just, it's not a system anybody would want right now.
Yeah, so, and, and, but we can't move on until it happens. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is, if, if we're gonna just drag this for a couple of years to 10 years, before we decide whether it's good or bad, let's stop now.
I mean, one thing on St. Teresa, for instance, it just popped in my head, you mentioned that, right? We have talked about that, you and I, and I think it's, you got pots and population density out there, it'd be cool to, to capture that. Their PSC certificated utility, there are mechanisms whereby they could expand that way, right? I mean, they could, they could stretch out there, in my understanding, for St. Teresa-
They need his money.
They can, but-
They have it.
I mean, I mean, it's, it's, they want us to solve their problem, right? Which I totally understand, and, and we're trying, we're spending a lot of time, money, effort doing that. And they're a good neighbor, we wanna work with them, everything else. And like you said, we won't, we went, we've gone dormant on this before. To me, what's driving it now is they have a buyer builder for chunks of lots out there, and finally, not just individual owners that were building, now they have someone building, like a wind, like Windmark went up, right? Even if it goes dormant now, again, there's no hard feelings, they, they're gonna be coming back. I mean, I'm not, don't know that for a fact, but when they have eight, I mean, they've gotta put that infrastructure in there, or those build, that building stops out there. They can't keep putting houses up without water and sewer. So, they're gonna have to make the investment in that infrastructure, all the investment, we're, they're trying to sort of shift off to us, right? If we took it over, then they may, they may, you know, quote-unquote, cover the cost, but we're gonna have to be out there putting lines in the ground, everything else, to serve all these homes that are being built, even now, right? They're starting, you can see them out there. So-
Not exactly.
That'd be their responsibility.
It's their responsibility. I mean, they sold the lots, they sold the lots, they've gotta provide, they've gotta put water and sewer in the ground for those people, whether we cut a deal or not. They're trying, you know, they would love for us to take it over today, and then that'd be our responsibility.
It, it'd be just like any other development talent. That, why, it's just the developer's responsibility to construct the infrastructure.
They're not, that's, sorry, D'Orn is not the developer. So, Summer Camp is developed, right? So, St. Joe has to put that in for D.R. Horton.
Summer Camp is the developer. St. Joe would just be the developer.
When I say, those are platted lots.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
I mean, D.R. Horton's a building permit, and they say, where's our water and sewer?
St. Joe sells a lot to D.R. Horton, just like they sell it to B.E.A.
Yes, and D.R. Horton's not putting water and sewer-
Saying that water and sewer's available.
Yeah, water and sewer's available. So, they're stuck with that problem, they're trying to shift that problem onto us.
I, I don't see it that way.
How, how did you- How did, who do you think's paying for it?
Mr. Bellinger?
Right. They're trying to shift that onto us.
No, no, I think St. Joe still will pay. If we took over the water sewer.
I understand, I understand they will reimburse us for it, but it's, it's us.
No, they have the Jones plumbing, they have the, we've already kind of talked about that, that just, they just keep doing their own tests.
That we don't, I mean, when they put lines in the ground, we've got to go out and look at them and say, if it's ultimately going to be our system, we're on top of that, right? They're paying for it, but we're on top of it.
That's right. Build, build in the east, but, you know, that's right.
Commissioner Bellinger?
No, I'm good.
Hey, I'm listening to the.
All right. Now, um, Mr. Russell, did you finish with your present?
Uh, no.
How do you do it, like when you're at the bar and they give you 15 minutes to last call or something like that? Okay, 10 minutes.
Well, that's true.
But it's, we've got 25 minutes.
Okay. I'll blow through these real quick. I'll go through them real quick. So the last one, the water system, um, I said, a number six here, successful pressure testing and bacteriological testing to Carabelle specifications is condition precedent within 30 days of Carabelle taking ownership, if they did. So that would identify, um, any repair, repairs needed, you know, if they failed, they have to fix it before Carabelle takes ownership. Okay. And then moving on to, um, the sewer system now. Okay, go ahead. Uh, let's see. We understand that during a maintenance period prior to completion, uh, pump out and hauling and raw wastewater can come to the city of Carabelle's plant, we talked about that, at an agreed upon price. Number two is understood that St. Joe is designing improvements and, um, they're doing that wholly at their cost. And the Carabelle would be provided phased construction drawings and advanced permits fills for review and comment. And Carabelle reserves the right to refuse specific equipment being proposed while making recommendations for substitute equipment. I think that's important, um, to make sure that, you know, they're installing equipment that operator, Carabelle's operators are familiar and confident with. Number three here is on the SCADA system, same as for the water system. And number four, same for the water system, they would have to conduct successful pressure testing and provide video reports of gravity sewer within 30 days of Carabelle taking ownership. And again, they can identify and make repairs necessary. So that's, those are, those are the sewer system.
And number two, where you talk about that we would have to review their, Carabelle, the city of Carabelle would review their draw, construction drawings and, and permits. So who does that review? That would be, and who, if that's you, then who pays you?
St. Joe would reimburse the city. That's all.
That's, I mean, disagreement is very, would be very detailed. Would have to be.
It's true.
Personnel.
It's true. And I would review, but Charlie, I'm sorry, Charlie would, Charlie would obviously be a big part of that for me.
I know, I hate to introduce a new sort of concept, but something we, for our little discussion we just had, there's this St. James Island Utility Company that's, that's out there. We're kind of, we're kind of, that's, we're tangled up in that. But what if summer camp was simply a big subdivision on the edge of Carabelle, service territory, right? Which it is, they're a developer. How would we treat that developer, right? We, we'd charge them, we'd ask them to put in facilities, we'd ask them to oversize facilities, we, just like we did with St. James, right? Which we could do better, but that was one version of the developer's agreement, right?
That's a very good point, Dan.
Why, why mess with this utility concept?
We would charge them taff fees.
We'd charge taff fees, we'd charge them.
They had to put in them.
And they put in the infrastructure and we could ask them to oversize it.
And for St. Joe, um, uh, St. James Bay, who put in the interconnections?
They would have to put them in, they'd get them to our point of service.
St. James Bay brought it to.
Carabelle did.
Oh, Carabelle did that.
They got a grant for it. See, that's what I was trying to say, there, I guess, go back to the beginning, is we can't get any grant money until, for that system, until it's not, not that we, it, it needs to be dissolved and, and all, everything transferred to the city of Carabelle's permit. So the city of Carabelle owns it, the whole thing. To get grant money, to, to be able to do the, or any other thing, my hands are tied, you can't do any of that stuff.
But we do it in a piecemeal fashion, right? That's how developer would do it. Not gobble the whole thing up at one time.
I, I have a similar guy right in the other room down here who must have played five, five acre lots. And he wants water and sewer on them. And I have water and sewer at the corner over here. I told him he had to run it down there and that when the house comes along, when he puts the pipe in, it belongs to the city of Carabelle, when the house comes along, we'll come put the taff in and get the taff in.
And, and what's, and that, for instance, if he said, oh, I just can't afford that, we'd say, fine, I mean, go to the E.P., go wherever, go through the water management district, go somewhere, we'll support you, we'll give you a letter of support because you're building something that we want in town, it's affordable, whatever, and maybe there's money there available. But, because we will own it once, you know, just like any other development, just like we do with St. James Bay, just like, um, Blue Water Bay, just like all these subdivisions that were built. This is just a really big one, right?
But now, if we, if we.
You have to bring that one into it, yeah.
Sorry. Just to give it a, to give it a bad.
If the city takes the, connects to their wastewater, to their lift stations, uh, if we connect to their lift stations to bring it back, uh, as it was in your original feasibility study to the master lift station at St. James Bay, that though will be obsolete and I can't remember, you said 10 to 15 years of capacity, you know, would not be able to, um, lift that, that amount of sewer once they, they grow out there. So that would be obsolete in 10 to 15 years. But I suppose if it was our system, the city's system, the city could go for a grant, which are not guaranteed, to, to revise that somehow. But it's the interconnection. The, and, and when you did that feasibility study a couple of years ago, it was 1.5 to connect sewer to that master lift station there, right?
Right.
And, and about 500, I believe, to connect the water from the condos down east, the bungalows. And I think that's where the two years come in because it's going to take at least that long to get permits and get everything in the ground.
Well, the two years is, as I pointed out, two years doesn't matter to me, it's two years, one year, five year. But I don't want to take up, I don't want the city to be obligated at the end of that term, whatever it may be. I don't want the city to be obligated to assume something that's not financially self-sustained, that is costing the city money instead of making money.
But in, in a way, looking, again, I know I'm doing what I always get irritated when other people do, is changing the whole conversation is, what we spend a lot of time on is how do we step into their shoes and run their utility operations out there, right? Their water plant, their sewer plant. Why? Like why? It's just a big subdivision on the edge of outside Carabelle, unless it makes sense, unless we need a satellite facility, just like we have one in Lanark, but we're not, they're not anywhere close to D.D. Matt yet, right?
See, I kind of, I'm kind of looking at it the same way as you are, Dan. What they have out there, to me, and Charlie, he, he's expert, he'd tell me I'm wrong. But I was looking at that, if everything works smooth and we were to take over summer camp, that what they currently have out there as far as their treatment capabilities and their water capability, that would be satellite what Carabelle already has.
And it would be satellite 20 years from now. We're trying to figure out how to work around it right now. You know, it's an expense for everyone. It's a problem.
But it would be, if it was a subdivision, just a regular subdivision, it would be up to the developer to put in all that infrastructure. We've got, um, out there, um, it's out at the end of River Road, those two subdivisions.
Three Rivers Estate and.
Yeah. Owned by Deltona.
Right.
But they've got everything, all the infrastructure's in, you know, they're ready to rock and roll if they'll start selling lots and it's already hooked to, to our water and sewer infrastructure. That's, that's really what, what needs to be done, if, you know, if we treat it like a, um, a regular subdivision.
Oh, and taff fees are paid at bands.
Their taff fees are already paid out there.
Just like when we talked about doing Timber Island, those timeshare on Timber Island, things like that.
The taff, taff fees have been paid to St. Joe, but can we?
St. Joe.
Ask St. Joe. Right, St. Joe has paid us taff fees. That's a good point. So 500 lots, taff fees for 500 lots. What would that be?
Closer to four or five million bucks.
It's a big number.
Yeah. Because I don't even know what they are anymore, about 6,500 per water.
Yeah, they're about south of.
All right. I'm going to excuse Commissioner Allen, he's got to pick up someone and bring them back to the meeting. Because we're not going to take action here on this workshop anyway, it's just going to be, I'm, I'm going to ask for it to adjourn at, at a quarter till six.
You know, we required.
No, go ahead.
We required St. Joe with the development on Timber Island to pay their taff fees upfront and they actually expired after 10 years.
We did that direction for.
We're out of that.
10 years.
So if you put a master lift station, kind of like in St. James Bay, you put one at summer camp, does that solve all their, all their infrastructure issues for you?
Yeah, it's, it's like the most expensive way to go.
Right. But it solves all their infrastructure problems and they would pay for it anyways and their water interconnects.
They don't have lines in the ground.
Well, that's on them.
So even if you put a lift station, you don't have the lines.
I guess, what I'm, if we satellite for 20 years, there's equipment there and we get it 20 years later, is it going to cost us a bunch of money because now it's, what, 40 years old?
And you're obsolete, dead.
So is the infrastructure really worth on a 20-year goal thing with what's building out there? Is the city going to benefit from that infrastructure? Or do you treat it just like any other subdivision, tell them, put it in the ground and we'll take it?
It, it's the customers that we're, we're going for. That's the long-term, long-term.
And that's, I kind of like that idea to treat it, you know, like a subdivision.
Well, I, in, in the back of my mind, without saying it, I assumed, you know what assuming does, but I assumed we were treating this like any other subdivision. And, 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 and that they were going to be required as the landowner developer, St. Joe, they were going to be required to put all the infrastructure inside summer camp to hook to the city's equipment, equipment meaning their lines along the highway. It would be up to the developer.
But it seems like they don't want to, I mean, we know they don't want to connect with water.
I got something to add to that.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Uh, in St. James Bay, city of Carabelle owns the utilities out there. Would that be the same way at summer camp, would the way you're thinking? Would, would we own day one, own the utility and they would just be the developer out there? And that's what we're talking about. Same as St. James Bay, these other developers. So we're, okay. I'm good with that.
That's kind of what I was thinking in the back of my mind.
That's, well, where, where do we go off on such a far track?
Well, no, the reason we're on the far track, I think, right? We're literally, what's, what's hurting everybody's head, I, I mean, this is the thing about it is, we're headed to that destination two different ways, right? And what we ran into, I think, is all this complication is because there's a thing called the St. James Island Utility Company, PSC regulated utility with a water supply sewer plant. It's almost like we're acquiring another fully run, stop, I mean, that, it just occurred to me now, I'm sorry, like all these years go by, right? It just occurs to me, but, but that's what I think, when Tony says, hey, that's really what I was talking about, because that's really what we're talking about. We, we're saying, hey, we'll take over your company essentially, we're going to get in over there, you're going to pay for these things, but we're going to be running it while you, while you're putting them in and covering our costs to oversee. Now, like that's just complicating what is a pretty simple transaction, if it's a 500 unit subdivision on the edge of Carabelle that we're, I mean, St. James Bay, St. James is 300.
Once they get there, once they get there, if you treat it like a regular subdivision and, and every time a new property owner comes online, then, then we take that, we take that account, manage that account. Maybe we, you know, the, we had talked before that the incentive was that we would get those treatment plants out there, but if it's going to take a long time, years before they can actually be functional, how, how functional will they be when they can be operated? And do we, do we, if we can take that sewer capacity and operate and handle all of that sewer, we know we can handle their water capacity, can we handle sewer capacity? Once that's built out, then why do we need those, those two plants out there? We would be able to provide water sewer, uh, then to the east as well.
But, right. So I think in the ultimate condition, you need the plant.
You need the plant, the way it is.
Ultimate, yeah. In the ultimate condition.
Same thing I was saying, that at, at the end of the thing, when, when it becomes a profitable, profitable venture, that should be turned, or heated over to the city of Carabelle.
But, but that could be part of a development agreement.
Yes.
Like you would with any subdivision, right?
That's right.
So the treatment station would be the same as a lift station, the same, the treatment facility would be the same as a lift station or pipe in the ground. I mean, we just treat it the same.
And we wouldn't accept it until it was built to the city's specification.
And taff fees paid upfront.
And taff fees paid.
Yep. And we can phase that, meaning they may balk at paying taff fees on lots that are the wood, the woods right now, but developers all the time phase it. They say, hey, we want to, we want to, we want to pay taff fees on 100 lots.
All right. I have one more question, it's how we're getting the taff fees up front now. Well, if we get the taff fees up front, we put the infrastructure in?
They put the infrastructure in.
There's no, is there? We put the pipe in from here up to St. James Bay and we put the pipe in across the river at Timber Island. We did.
Hey, I'm, I'm with you, I'm following you there, Charlie. I agree that we have to do that.
So the interconnection would be Carabelle's responsibility.
Under that, that is not, those were grant funded.
Now, the interconnect would be us, but, but that upfront 3 million dollar taff fees would cover that.
The thing is, the thing is, we, I, I believe our, our service availability policy thing is they bring it to our point of service, right?
Well, I know a lot of people that are.
They bring it to our point of service, like we're not paying.
We say fine, but why would you?
If you know this from us, you won't write it to us.
Yeah.
Problem solved.
So let me, let me, we're going to, I'm going to adjourn here shortly so that we can take, right? We've got an extended meeting coming up here. Do we want to have another workshop on this?
Sounds like we do.
I hope we got too far.
Well, we've got an hour and 15 minutes.
I, I think we made a long, I think we went a long way, but I think if, if we did another workshop, it, I think the viewpoints from the public and from the commission, from the boards, this is just my opinion, is pretty much on target and we're all on the same page. But the important part is sitting right there with Russell and Charlie, what, what the technical end of it is.
And how do we, we need to, to develop some, a proposal, a counter offer back to St., Ms. Bridgette? Uh, we need to, you know, we've got to do that and I don't know if we're prepared to do that today or not, it doesn't seem like we're really, we're just reviewing these points that you've brought out to us.
It, it sounds like it needs to be in the format of, of a development agreement, just like we would do with any other developer. And I think that's, that's going to involve Dan being part of that.
Well, in my opinion, I think Dan would definitely be the, the final step, if you will, but the technical part of it is you and Charlie, that's my opinion, because of, that's, that's what y'all do.
And agree. And agree, agree.
Dan, Dan's the attorney, he's gonna make sure it's legal.
And, and the trick is, if, if we shift to this approach, St. Joe has to decide, obviously, whether that's just too expensive.
Right.
If they wanna continue on a different financial path, and if so, that's fine. But...
That's just my opinion.
But we know we can't take it on and, and lose $300,000 a year, we're not, we're not going there.
Should the next step be Dan writes a proposal?
I beg your pardon?
Should the next step be that Dan writes a proposal?
I don't know, are we ready for that yet? We need to probably...
No, I think, I do think, that's right, I think, um, Charlie and Russell, and I'll be happy to weigh in, however facetious it is, to reach out to St., I know, because we're not making decisions here today, but to discuss this approach, that you're a developer, you have a subdivision, we serve it just like St. James Bay, but you can show them those agreements as examples, but under that framework, it's, they would have to decide whether they're okay, I mean, it would let them dissolve their utility, that, that's really what they wanna do, is get out from the PSC, right? The regulatory framework, and, you know, that, that's tough for them, I don't suffer anybody, and, and just be, you know, look technically at where they're building out there, how many, again, how many lots are being built, how much pipe needs to go in the ground, what lift stations need to come online, and what water service needs they have, and, and then what's it gonna take for us to serve those needs financially?
All right, well, can we then agree in principle to let, um, Dan and/or Russell go to, um, St. Joe Company, uh, and, and see if they are, are anyway interested in, in approaching this in the form of a development agreement, um, situation, and treating them as if they're any other subdivision? And how does that sound to you, Mr. Charles?
Sure.
Okay.
I kinda thought that's the way it had to go, if we're gonna move forward out there. We can't do anything out of this situation, that's, that's, we can't get a grant money, there's nothing, we can't move forward to the east, which would bring in more sewage to operate the plant, we're like that. So, yeah, it would have to come that way, so you can make decisions.
All right, and there's still the issue of the interconnections, so, how, how we work that out? All right, I think, I think this is, let, let them do that, and we'll, um, we can call for a workshop, I can, I can call for a workshop, um, any, any time, you know, and certainly have a public notice, and Courtney can poll to see when we can all get together, so, is that all right? Can we agree in principle on that? Okay, is everybody then, are, are you all right then?
Yes.
Okay, how about you, Charlie?
Good.
Okay, everybody's okay then?
All good.
Okay, then I'm going to, uh, just adjourn this workshop, and then we'll re-adjourn at, at 6:00 A.M. for our meeting. 6:00 A.M.